Company trucks run on compressed natural gas. On the back, he also stated that as far as having a public station, the distance between Santa Barbara and Paso Robles obviously is 100-plus miles. There's not a public station. JB Doerr is the only one in San Luis, and that's a card lock system. So we're trying to help promote the CNG corridor through the Central Coast. If we could put one here, we'll also bring people into the city of Lompoc to help promote some business, you know, some business for the businesses here. And obviously do that, but we need some letters of support to help us obtain the grant. And Lompoc Honda can't sell us a compressed natural gas car unless there's a station in the city. He's donated $1,000 to the school district to help fund the grant rider. So I'd like to try and get Chumash and the waste company to go and convert to CNGs, as well as maybe Colt. So that would, you know, bring in some cleaner burning diesel vehicles into the city as well.
Anyone have a question for Councilmember Lingle?
Right now, there are no commercial CNG stations in Lompoc or in the area. Do you know if there are any plans for any of our local businessmen to open up CNGs?
Honda was considering it, but it was a considerable amount to put in a smaller station that wouldn't fuel as fast as a station that we put in can because our compressor will be big. And we already have three storage tanks that we used back in the day to blend our fuel because it wasn't a good blend coming up from the ground.
Okay, so in your opinion, this would not compete with any local businesses now or potential in the future?
Not unless they had a big enough area and could build a really big station. We need a pretty big station to fuel all of our buses.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chris from Lompoc Honda called me up and asked us to support this because it would be helpful to him. And I think George Bedford was looking into it with General Motors also, but he said he wouldn't be able to be here this evening because he's at a dealer conference up north. Councilmember Starbuck?
Where are you going to build it at?
We're just going to kind of add it to our existing station. Right now, we don't have, we tried to find out if we need any plans or anything to go either out onto H Street, or if we need to come in where our food service building is and have it on our property. It's just going to depend on what the city says as far as encroachment onto, you know, as far as as close to the street, or what we can encroach into the sidewalk and our property. But I think we basically need someone to come in and tell us, you can have it here, 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 but we haven't been able to do that yet.
You feel like your chances are pretty good for this grant?
The grant writers seem to think so, yes.
Good.
They have been successful in obtaining grants for the C5, which is the Clean Cities Central Coast over in San Luis. They've written grants, and they've been successful in obtaining the grants to put stations and stuff in.
Good. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Have you approached the Air Pollution Control District of Santa Barbara County for their support?
Yes, I just actually had a couple of emails tonight with Jim Fredrickson. He's possibly going to kick in some money to help fund the hoses and stuff that hook up into the buses. There was a grant that's coming out that was going to fund $500 of the $2,000 it costs per hose, but he might just include it into this grant, so maybe he can kick in a little bit more to help.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Nope, okay, coming back to council. So I think what I'm looking for here is a recommendation to write a letter on their behalf supporting their grant. If someone would like to move that, Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we prepare a letter of recommendation from the city, or a letter of
Support.
Support from the city for the school district in support of their program for a CNG plant.
And a second?
A second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Okay, there you go. We'll get it to you by the end of the week. Okay, the next one is a public hearing item, and it's the city council will conduct a public hearing to provide direction regarding a text amendment to the City of Lompoc Municipal Code, section noted below. I'm not going to read the numbers, but it's CC, Convenience Center District, CO, Commercial Office District, C2, Central Business District, PCD, Plan Commercial Development District, OTC, Old Town Commercial District, and MU, Mixed Use. Does anyone in the council have something they want to comment on before I take public comment on this? Councilmember Costa?
Marilyn, if you could just briefly describe what you've presented in attachment, one I think that would help everyone. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to paraphrase down. So this is, the title of this is a Commercial Success Zone General, and the concept behind the Commercial Success Zone is to simplify the number of zoning districts that we currently have, and it would be the ones that I described earlier, the Commercial Office District, which currently is offices and apartment rental, if you will. The Central Business District, or C2, which was the original classification for commercial zones in Lompoc. As a matter of fact, going back to 1946, it was the only commercial zone in Lompoc. And then PCD, excuse me, Plan Commercial Development District. And this district is for the larger parcels that were developed in later years. The way that the ordinance works now is even though the project is completed and the shopping center is done, it continues to remain in PCD. So there are substantial requirements to a new business going into that existing center as opposed to going into a C2 zone where it's an existing building. One of the things that PCD had that's retained in this ordinance are two things. Number one is that if the footprint of a building, the number of square feet is changed, it still has to go to the planning commission. And if the facade of the building is changed, the part that the public sees outside the building is changed, that has to go to the planning commission. New construction, excuse me, new construction is treated exactly the same as it would be under PCD. Literally, it was cut and paste. So what it's designed to do is take a completed building and make it simpler for someone to move in and open a business and have a permitted use rather than a conditional use. And then the last one is Old Town Commercial, which is the area in downtown. That ordinance put substantially more difficult restrictions on the downtown, which limited the uses of the buildings. As an example, an office could not occupy a ground floor space down there. And you'll recall, over the years, we've had quite a bit of vacant space, and the rents have declined from about 75 cents a square foot in 1985 to 45 cents a square foot today. The idea behind the Old Town Commercial Ordinance was actually to make it easier to do business down there, so some things were added within that that you wouldn't have anywhere else, but they didn't prove to be terribly beneficial. One is the outside display of a sign on the sidewalk in front of the building. The second one is the sidewalk cafe rule, which has been incorporated as a conditional use throughout the city. The next one was sidewalk vendors, which never really went anywhere. The next one was a development incentive for plazas and pathways between buildings, and none of that has ever been used that we could determine. What has happened is it's been very difficult to bring businesses in on the ground floor in those downtown buildings, and this would lift those restrictions. And then the last one is the Mixed Use District. The Mixed Use District is principally the 100 block of North B through G, the 200 block of F and G, and then some other blocks in the I Street area. The mixed use concept is of, oh, you know, let me cover one more thing with regard to downtown. There was also, and if you were in the downtown district, you didn't have to provide parking because the city parking lots are there. That won't be affected because there's actually a parking district down there that covers those areas, so that would still be the same as it was before. Okay, back to mixed use. So mixed use was envisioned as the opportunity to build residential above commercial in those blocks. The Mixed Use Ordinance had some issues when it was written that made it financially unviable. No one could successfully build a building and occupy it, and this seeks to eliminate those while actually expanding mixed use as a concept. And it also eliminates the name "mixed use" because mixed use has been an issue in the loan industry, and a mixed use property, you can't get it financed to sell it right now. Then in a general sense, there's also some language in here that takes existing nonconforming uses and makes them existing conforming uses, because again, in an existing nonconforming use, the property is virtually impossible to get commercial financing on today. The only way you're going to sell the property is to finance it yourself. And if you haven't paid it off yet, then you can't do that. So those are kind of the general directions. I gave a bunch of examples in the prior meetings, and I'm not going to belabor that point, but I did receive a phone call today from Mutt Beatty, who owns the long ago Beatty Ford location at Chestnut and H. And you may have noticed, he put a sign out on it in an attempt to, you know, find a new use for the property. And he's had a number of inquiries, but because the property was rezoned to mixed use in the past, any of those things would require a conditional use permit and a general plan text amendment and a zoning map amendment. And so far, he hasn't found anybody that wanted to go anywhere down that road. The key point from everybody I've talked to in the realty community and in the business community is to make as many uses as possible permitted uses rather than conditional uses or because the conditional use process is time-consuming, and probably more important, there's a great deal of uncertainty. The other issue with regard to our existing ordinances is because they were written back in the '70s, they talk about habidasheries and furriers and those sort of things. So this ordinance seeks to talk more about business types in a general sense, so business and professional offices, restaurants in-house and patio service with beer and wine, fully enclosed vehicle sales, new and used, community centers and social clubs. The categories are much simpler. And then the second zone that is in the document is the Commercial Success Zone Neighborhood. And that's not too far off of what we have right now for the Community Convenience Center District, CC. And the idea behind that is it's a little more specific for what would generally be called islands. That would be, as an example, the A and North Shopping Center, or the O and Laurel Shopping Center, or the V and Ocean Shopping Center. And that ordinance is a little more restrictive in terms of what you can do. And then the last really major shift in the concept for the entire Commercial Success Zone is that the entire zone would have the opportunity to have residential in it. So if you wanted to build a building, or you had a building you wanted to convert, you could put residential on the second floor of any building on H or Ocean. And if you were off H or Ocean, you would have the ability to put residential on the first floor, as you do now in the Commercial Office District. So really, it makes it a lot simpler to determine what you can do as a business because the language is more current. It makes it easier for someone to come to town and look for that parcel or that building that's perfect for their needs and be less concerned about whether it's in Old Town Commercial, or Community Convenience, or Community Office, or PCD, you know, and how that would work. Did I get it all? Okay. So there's kind of the thumbnail sketch. Does anyone on council have a question before we start a public comment? Okay. There are a couple of people who testified last time and weren't able to be here, and I'll just recap theirs when we get done. Who would like to speak on this now? Come on, let's go. If you don't stand up, we won't listen to you. Come on.
Anybody in business will know that it's been tough to try and get going in business in Lompoc. A lot of it due to zoning and different things that go on. And I think cooperation and working together and trying to do anything we can to get a legitimate business in our city is a good thing. And what I mean by that is even our sign ordinances and all the things that we get into, if somebody has a fairly big enough front and they can put a sign on it that's very decorative and it looks good on the building architecturally and it's shown in advance, you know, maybe it's off by a few inches or something, everybody called you on it before, but I think we should be more lenient. Don't get me wrong, I don't want to put a big sign up. I just think that we should look at things better and try and help everybody go into business and to do things here in Lompoc, to be a businessman or woman. And it was just so difficult to try and get into business, a lot of people quit, and I come close when I first started because I was at my wits' end. I just said, "The heck with it, it's not worth it." But if we could work together and do something to make it easy for newcomers and old people that are in business and stuff to do a little bit of different facade and different things like that, you know, being that it's showing and it's approved, you know, to make it so that everybody knows what they're doing and work together on it, I think it would be a real plus. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a great idea. I think you guys are moving in the right direction. One thing we need to consider is to make something economically viable, we need to be adaptable. That's very important. So it can't be crippling economically to convert a building in one direction and then convert it back to another. Does that make sense? To me, they're boxes. They're boxes with roofs. We can heat them. We can make them livable in terms of residences. We can make them into office buildings. We can make them into retail space. But right now, the way the economy's moving, the way technology's moving, I think we need to be extremely adaptable. And that means if we're going to go in and convert a building, it can't be crippling as far as the permit process is concerned, the cost. If we convert a building to be a residential space, and we move people in there, and then there's a demand for office space, we need to be able to convert back. And that's going to be important because if we set, and we, you know, obviously there are issues to be addressed. We need to make sure people are safe when they occupy the building. That's number one important. But as far as when it comes to being adaptable, we need to be very adaptable. If we can move into other countries and build cities and invade them, we certainly should be able to convert an office building into a living space and vice versa, and make classrooms out of them. When we need schools, convert them into living spaces otherwise. And that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Frank Kane, City of Lompoc resident. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to show my support for consolidating these commercial zones. My personal experience has been, even when I was on a planning commission, it has always been, or I shouldn't say always, I'd say in the last 10 years, it has been difficult to find properties for clients in the City of Lompoc. Currently, I'm an active real estate appraiser and broker. Just to keep it short, about a year and a half ago, while I was on the planning commission, I tried to find a location for a company. I knew the ins and outs of what it took to make it happen, but as a planning commissioner, I couldn't make it happen. And so I believe that anything that we can do to streamline and to make it simpler for any business, regardless of what the, you know, what it is that they're doing, we need to do that. And I think by starting consolidating these zonings, which if you read them, it's a nightmare, or, well, it was difficult for at least my clients to understand. So I'm hoping that you guys will approve this. I think if you just drive around the City of Lompoc, I think you'll find out that there's definitely, we're talking, we talk about economic development every day in the newspaper. I got to believe this is a great place to start, and hopefully you guys will make that choice tonight. So please vote for it.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Robert Schmiedeke. I'm a resident of Lompoc. Have you ever seen Detroit, Michigan? They have really some very stringent laws on zoning regulations and arduousnesses. Hasn't worked out well for them. I don't want to see Lompoc looking like Detroit. The people that spoke here prior to me have pointed out something, and the mayor's pointed out something, that we need to be adaptable. We need to be open to new ideas and have the zoning set so we can do that with minimal problems in opening up a business and doing business. I saw that when I suddenly noticed zone changes coming up in another area. But I also noticed that if we can't do business here, then we can't live here. And our residential areas are definitely tied to our commercial zones. And if we can simplify that and make it adaptable, as the mayor is trying to do and other members of this council are trying to do, I think our city will be vastly more successful. We've got to clean up the little ordinances of how to get through planning and like that. I've heard some terrible stories sitting out there in the audience about that. This all must be streamlined and brought up to date, and I think this council can do it. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else standing up, and a couple of you talked, no, you only get one chance?
I've got one more thing to say.
No way.
One good, for instance, is when Dodge got going here in town, and Tim Costa come in there and was getting it going good and everything, they had a lot over on H Street that they wanted to use for one of their lots to show new and used cars and stuff. He went over there, and they cleaned it all up and painted it and really made it look nice and got booted out. And I never did quite understand why that happened. And then all of a sudden, the city buys it, and, you know, that's not revenue for our city. That just costs the city more money to run it. It's another little park or whatever it is. But that's kind of a weird thing to go on. You know, here a guy wants to do something right, and he gets shut down for it. I think we need to look at that. That's a good, for instance.
Thank you. Next.
Susan Gallagher, a resident. I think what the city council's trying to do is excellent in making it simple. And wouldn't it be a novel idea, just like at Christmas, going by Teddy's store and you go shopping in downtown and not have to go anywhere else? And we need those services here. There's not enough hours in the day to get everything done and then think about going somewhere else to spend your money. I think we need to really make it simple, fast, and efficient. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last chance. Going, going, gone. Okay. I've got something that I promised to relay. I just got to put my finger on it. I'm a phone call today. Richard Clark called and said he wasn't able to be here and just wanted me to remind everybody his discussion about the house and all the issues that he had, and be certain that somewhere within this, people who have houses within these zones are able to be able to continue to use them. And Mr. Nolan with the used car lot is in Carlsbad, and he also asked that we remember what he had said before with regard to making it simple and empowering people to get things done with their property and the issues that he had with trying to find any use for the building. And then I think that was it. Yep, okay. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I do have one question from your attachment. You said placing these properties in the CSG zone removes those restrictions. Can you give me an example of what additional restrictions were in the Old Town Commercial Zone that you feel that this CSG would be removing?
Sure. The first one is the prohibition against using downstairs space for offices, which is the most common use in Old Town. The second one would allow automotive use for some of the automotive buildings, for instance. The gas station at Iron Ocean was an automotive use forever and ever and really can't be now. Could be a car stereo shop, but it couldn't be an automotive use. The restrictions on, let's see, you have to have an oak door now if you're going to refurbish a building. You can't continue with the door that you have if you're going to come in for a conditional use permit. And then the other really big thing is most of the things that go on down there now require a conditional use permit, so that requirement would be lifted. The one for sidewalk cafes, we rode into this, so that would continue, but we would be able to do that in other parts of town, too, if the sidewalk was wide enough.
The reason that I bring this up is because although I understand we want to lift some of those restrictions that I agree would help streamline the process for those businesses, would that not then place more emphasis on the need to update our downtown-specific plan? Because the idea that there, I believe that there should be offices or can be offices in certain areas of downtown, but other areas, you don't want to use those storefronts with offices. You actually want to use those for other things like restaurants and consumer-based things.
This would actually lift the downtown-specific plan, so it would cease to exist. By changing, taking out the, the OTC ordinance would remove the downtown-specific plan.
So are you then not, do you have no concern for what businesses would then be allowed in the downtown area that wouldn't before, possibly big box stores and things like that?
There are restrictions in here with regard to the size of facilities. Given the current economy, no one's going to tear down a building to build something, I think is, would be a very safe assumption. And the only parcel in downtown that's of any size at all is adjacent to the downtown parking lots, and that's been vacant since, the west side's been vacant since 1984, and the east side, where the Sherman House was, has been vacant since, I'm going to say, 87 or 90 along in there.
Right, and although that I agree that something needs to spur, you know, the development in these areas and fill those fronts, my concern is you're then opening it up to franchises, for example. You know, do we really want a McDonald's in our downtown? And that's a question I think that we would need to ask.
Well, McDonald's couldn't go in down there because that would require a conditional use permit for a drive-through.
Not all McDonald's. I'm using that as an example because they actually, franchises go into downtown areas, and then they, you know, will pull out their drive-through because they feel that it's a prime location. So I'm not necessarily as concerned about that. It's just the idea in general that I want to maintain the downtown area for certain kinds of businesses and recreation that may be lost because of this. I think that this is a great idea to start with, and I think that streamlining is important, but I wanted to have council discuss that a little bit because that was my one concern. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have more than just one concern, and I will go through the specifics in a minute. But I do want to thank the public for their input, and I do agree that the system needs to be simplified, but it doesn't need to be bastardized. And I do want to make sure that we preserved a certain set of standards in this town, and we don't just open it up to build whatever and wherever, okay? So I do think that we need to have standards. I do understand very much the problem with cumbersome regulations, perhaps too specific I do understand very much the problem with cumbersome regulations, perhaps too specific, and that needs to be simplified, no question about it. I do agree with the mayor that we probably should go down to two commercial zones. Nevertheless, the proposal that is here with a specific language, and I will get as we go along, it's actually, in many ways, is more confusing. And I can bring some examples in a minute. I do have the same concerns regarding Old Town. And the concerns really have to do with a vision. We have plenty discussed that we want Lompoc to be a vibrant town where people comes into this town and can have recreation, shopping, entertainment, jobs, high-end jobs, good wage-paying jobs. To be able to do all of that, we need to have an attractive town. I thought that the Old Town specific plan had a purpose, and that was to make it a location where people would go to. They would walk, they would look at the storefronts, they would shop, they would go to restaurants, they would entertain themselves, and so forth. So if that is the case, why would we want to have, to fill it up with offices instead of, you know, window shopping instead of restaurants? So I think that vision needs to be re-discussed. I thought that Old Town was supposed to be a destination location like much of, all of those towns that we look up to. Paso Robles, San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, they all have that charming little place where everybody wants to go to and go to dinner that Friday night and then walk around. I thought that was what Old Town was supposed to be. If we open it up and we allowed, or we have no restrictions and it can be, and it can become like what anywhere else in Ocean or H will become, then it loses the whole point. It's not a destination. It's just, I might as well go down H or go down Ocean for the 10, 15 blocks or whatever. There is no difference. There is no differentiation. So in that, you know, with that, I have a little bit of problems. I would like to protect Old Town and maintain it with a little bit more restriction as to what can go there. As to specifically what it can go there, I think, you know, that's really the job of the planning commission instead of us to be doing it, but however, we're doing it. And going back to the simplification, I do agree with the mayor. I mean, I really do think we need to simplify, but I want to bring up a couple of things We talk about this commercial success general, CSG, and there is a list of things that are permitted. And for example, it says, what would be permitted in this new zone is repair of consumer goods or the service or assembly of consumer goods for the public. Well, how do you interpret that? What does that mean to you? Okay? It's an interpretation. A staff will have to interpret it. And the applicant is going to get upset if the staff doesn't interpret it correctly. So we're not removing the problem here, okay? We're really not removing the problem. There is still gonna be a staff interpretation, there is still gonna be an appeal and so forth. And if I even go further and I look specifically, by the way, this is in page two of five, the very bottom, repair of consumer goods or the service or assembly of consumer goods for the public, that would be permitted. And then under prohibited, it says manufacturing. Well, in my business, the assembling of consumer goods is manufacturing. Nowadays, we actually, you know, we really assemble things together and then we sell them, and that we call manufacturing. So right here, this document is totally contradictory. It's not simplifying anything. I'm sorry. It's not. It's leading to interpretation, interpretation that the staff will have to do, all of those complaints that we've heard a thousand times over. Staff interpreted wrong. Staff was too vague. This is not gonna change that. This is not gonna change that, okay? For example, repairs, renovated and repaired buildings. If repairs are only meant to return the building to its former condition, planning commission review is not required. Page four of five. So the whole thing in here is about that if you have an existing building, okay? You have a commercial enterprise in that existing building and you don't have any plans to alter the exterior, okay? You shouldn't have any specific development standards. So that means that not only we are lowering our standards, we're getting rid of our standards. So if you have a commercial building and as long as you don't do anything to the outside, you're not required to update it. You're not required to bring it up to today's standards, whether those may be energy conservation, whether those may be ADA compliance, whether those may be window coverings or not. This new document says, no, you don't need to do anything. You can just keep it like how you had it 50 years ago. Well, I don't personally agree with that. I think that if we have somebody that is coming in into a commercial building, even though they might not change the outside of it, I think it will be to a benefit to this city to upgrade it. Don't we want to become a more current town, upgrade, better-looking? Shouldn't we have those standards in place? Or do we just let it be, well, it can be as it was 50 years ago? And then you would start going about, well, they're still gonna have to get a permit, a building permit. And once the building permit comes in, they're still gonna have to apply, abide by all of those laws, so they're gonna have to have the fire sprinklers, they're gonna have to have the ADA compliance, they're gonna have to have the stairs, and they're gonna have to have the ADA parking outside. It's not removing any of the barriers. It's really not. They are there still. So this document is not removing them. All it's doing is saying, you can do whatever you want inside. I'm not gonna ask you to upgrade. Well, I would like to ask new developers to upgrade. I think our town could use a little upgrading. It's my personal opinion. Commercial enterprises establishing existing structures, this is also on page four of five, with no plans to alter the interior, again, where we were talking, do not need a specific development standards. So what if that commercial building, they wanna build a nightclub inside? They're not gonna do anything to the outside, but they're gonna put a nightclub inside. That's gonna be allowed. There won't be any standards, any specific development standards. Well, what about noise? What about when trucks deliver goods? We will have this council chamber full of neighbors complaining. They just put a nightclub right there in where that building was, you know, and guess what? It's really noisy. They are gonna be coming and complaining about it. It's not removing any barriers. It's not removing any barriers. It's just making it, well, you can go and do whatever you want, but that is really gonna add, I believe, a lot of problems because if we don't plan where things need to go, we're gonna get people complaining about it. One set of time would be this set of Lompoc residents, and another time might be another set of Lompoc residents that are saying, well, they just built a nightclub right next to where I live and I'm really unhappy about it, okay? Because of noise and this, and there was no regulation or standards that were put in place by the city. And yes, they bought an existing building, they didn't change it on the outside, and they put a nightclub inside. And they could do it. You know, I think that will lead to a lot of controversy in the city. I think it will lead to a lot of different sets of individuals complaining, and it's really not gonna remove the whole underlying problem here, which is the staff interprets things differently or interprets things wrong. This is still all very vague. It's still all very open-ended. And when things are open-ended, you do get into that problem. So, if repairs, well, I talked about that already. So anyway, so those are like the few examples, just by looking at this, that, yes, I think we need to simplify it, but we need to look at it a lot more carefully because what's being proposed here is, I think, just remove, remove the standards, open it up. But that doesn't mean simplification and prosperity, that really doesn't mean that, okay? You know, prosperity and simplification means to really have a thought-out, simplified zoning. And yes, maybe two is all we need. I totally agree with you. We don't need eight or seven with a whole bunch of tables that says what you can do. We need to simplify. But we need to be very specific with our standards and what kind of review process they will go to because if we don't have standards, we are going to make the town go in the wrong direction. I really do think so.
Okay, let me, let me talk about a couple of those. With regard to the repair of consumer goods and that one, that's actually some text I lifted out of somebody else's ordinance. So, you know, there may be better wording that would get that done, but that was something I saw in somebody else's that seemed to make good sense. I think there's a misunderstanding with regard to the repairs because the, that section with repairs is for a building that's been damaged. It's not for, for another building. It follows on to, when a building has been damaged by either a man or nature-caused event, that you have, and when we have that in the ordinance right now, you can, you can restore the building to its original condition.
The problem is that it says that the planning commission review is not required. Well, who knows what the condition of the older building was? I mean, you know, if a building burns down, how are you gonna restore it to its former condition? I mean, are you gonna uncover pictures? Are you going to what? I mean, it still needs to go through a review process, and the planning commission was created for that. So now you're removing all of that and you're saying, okay, my building burns down and I'm gonna build it to the former condition. Who knows what the former condition was? You know?
Good point.
Who knows? I mean, I think it's still, there's gotta be a review process, and that's what the planning commission is about. So even though it's an old building, even though it burned down and it needs to be put back into whatever the former restored, original condition is, somebody and somebody has to go and say, yes, that was the former condition, not just an arbitrary, you know, owner saying, yeah, that was the older, the older condition. It needs to go through a process.
Okay. Joe, is our, there's a number in the ordinance now about, you know, if it's a certain percent destroyed, you can put it back, and if it's more than a cer, is it 50%? Is that what it is now?
I apologize. I think it'd be better to ask Lucille, that she may know that off the top of my head. I don't.
If you don't know the answer, it's okay. It's kind of a tough one.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up for this specific.
I think it was 50%. Let me say with regard to the nightclub or restaurants in general, that the biggest problem with doing any of those is that you're going from a mercantile use to an A use building, and that is a lot of hoops to jump through. There, there's a lot of review and process in that when you go to one. And someone could do that today in most of the city. You could, you know, you could go through that process without going to the planning commission. But, you know, there's an easy way to do that, which is to, over here on the conditionally permitted uses, we put, put nightclubs in the conditionally permitted uses with restaurants. That solves that. Then they have to get a conditional use permit. I think that's a good catch. So I'll add that to the, to conditionally permitted uses in the fourth column where the restaurants are.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I hope Councilmember Martin is right on some things because I hope a bunch of those businesses do come knocking on our door. Not that we want a lot of nightclubs, but I wouldn't mind one or two in our town. I don't see many of them knocking on our doors right now, so if this was, if it's gonna take to get a couple, you know, let's, let's try it out. But I do have a couple of questions. Couple of concerns in the commercial success. If you look on page two of five, the center column, the last item, I guess we have a, a chapter in our business code for adult businesses currently. I've never read that. Can someone, yeah?
Yes, yes, we do.
What's, what do we define as an adult business?
It's rather extensive and uses a lot of terms that are, as you would think, sexually orientated, certain body parts, that kind of thing. And actually, with regard to that, those, not because I think they are, but because the courts think they are, they're First Amendment protected. So technically, we can't actually require CUPs of those. And the process that's in chapter 17137 actually complies with the rules that the courts have set out. And so I just want to make sure that when, when we have it in the conditionally permitted, if you weren't, if the intent was to mean they just can't come in willy-nilly, they have to go through a process, then that, I understand. But if it, if the intent was to mean they'd need a CUP, that we can't do. So it's a category that we'll just have to be careful on what language we use.
So maybe we should move it, this, this language to the permitted column would resolve that.
Yeah, I'd like to see it permitted, and then maybe we can make the permit, it cannot be within 50 miles of any school.
That'd be nice if we could do that. Unfortunately, you can't, you can't create restrictions that basically prohibit them practically. Again, that's what the courts have said. And, and the, the regulations do have some distance requirements, but it's not 50 miles.
Well, we can talk about that then a little bit. Okay. Then, also in the center column, same page, let's see, B1, 2, 3, 4, 5, from the bottom. It's talking about a conditional permit, churches, dance halls, amusement arcades.
Let's, I think it's time for you to answer that question with regard to churches, Joe. And he and I talked about this before, so we get good advice on that.
I don't know that that's what Councilmember Lingle is gonna ask about.
It wasn't really. I mean, I have no problem.
Why don't we have him ask his questions, then we'll talk about churches.
Yeah, I really have no problem with the, the churches. Maybe the adult businesses can't be within 20 miles of a church. That's okay with me. The amusement arcades, are we talking about just youth amusement? Are we gonna, it looks like we're putting some restrictions on youth amusement. What are we defining it as, as an amusement arcade?
I think we picked that up from the existing ordinance.
Okay. So maybe, I'd like to hear a little more discussion on amusement arcades. And this doesn't have to be all right now. I'm assuming we're gonna probably come this, come back to this.
Mr. Lingle, I just ask you a question, just so that when we're doing our, looking at it from a staff perspective, we're able to get answers to the questions you're asking. Are you asking, is your, the tenor of your question is if it's a, a young person's amusement arcade with video games and whatnot, that's something that you'd rather not see a CUP for or you'd, you'd rather prohibit?
I'd rather permit.
Without a CUP?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's take a quick rundown and see how other people feel about, see if we can resolve one at a time. Somebody else weigh in?
Well, Mary Lynn, I was gonna mention that that would fall under the nightclub's concern presented by Councilmember Martin, and that's, I think, with the issue of traffic and noise, although I'm not sure, I, I guess I'd have to look into the specifics and see what staff recommended. To me, it doesn't seem like you would necessarily need a conditional permit, especially if it was during regular business hours or evening business hours.
Well, remember that without a CUP, you don't, you can't regulate those hours of use. They could be open 24/7 if it wasn't in the CUP column. That's kind of why it was there.
Well, you, you could, you could permit using a youth arcade between certain hours, and if they're gonna operate different hours, then they need a CUP. I mean, you could set something like that up.
Okay.
But that's, that's why it's helpful for the staff to have, hear you discuss it so we sort of know where you're leading.
So I have to say, yeah, it does seem a little odd that out of these four listed, you know, amusement arcades doesn't really seem to be something, you know, it seems like there's many other things that businesses could be that you would possibly want a conditional permit for, but it is something that, you know, maybe we need to look into for hours-wise, not necessarily just... for hours-wise, not necessarily just, you know, youth amusement arcades, but anything of that nature, including, you know, nightclubs and things like that.
I agree. It's, it's just something that, you know, we, we hear all the time that there's not a lot for youth to do in this community, and now we're, we're putting more conditions on it. So, you know, hours, restriction on hours would be fine with me, but just something to not prohibit or limit the youth activities or the amusement arcades. Same column again, one, two, three, four, fifth from the top, where open display of vehicle sales, new and used camper RVs, motor, mobile homes, sales. In there, would we also include boats, motorcycles, et cetera?
Good catch.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Okay, and then, personal services, about the middle, you know, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, personal services, talking about tattoo parlors, smoke shops, pawn shops. I, I know some people don't like the, I think we have three tattoo parlors here in town. You know, I don't, I don't really have a problem with those. We don't seem to get any real complaints about it. Smoke shops, I think these are just strictly cigarettes and tobacco. It's not a bunch of marijuana and paraphernalia. But...
No, that's not exactly correct.
It is a lot of paraphernalia.
Yeah, it's a lot of paraphernalia.
Well, okay, so I'd like to discuss that a little bit then.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Lingle.
Why, I am so naive.
In fact, there's been an ongoing discussion on my Facebook page, because I had a constituent post a photo of the Olive Grove Charter School narrowly, I mean, right next door to a smoke shop, and that is in one of our shopping centers off of H Street. A lot of folks were perturbed by the location. So I saw here that the 1,000 feet of school or, uh, school bus stop, that would be allowed to be included. Is that correct?
For a smoke shop? Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I, I really like this idea of where locations can be prohibited. Unfortunately, there's also one right next to a game stop. And if you can imagine the constituents going into a game stop, it's going to be very close by. I'm not sure there's anything you can do to limit that, because those are two legitimate businesses.
What's a gang stop?
It's a game store.
Game stop. Yeah, it's like, you know, video games and things like that. So if you can imagine the folks walking in and out of there, that was a little disturbing, unfortunately. So I, I wanted to say that I agree with, with the area prohibited. I, I started that, so thank you for that. And conditionally permitted makes sense to me only because we don't want to have an overabundance, and that would be my concern.
Okay.
And just with regard to the one next to the game stop, the smoke shop was there first, so they, they chose to locate there.
And then the other one, under personal services, it's, there are some very legitimate massage parlors here in town, but there are also some not-so-legitimate massage parlors. So, how do I know? Because, because I have used legitimate ones. On D Street, Mr. Skyler's here in town, on across, down from his place, there's a, down from the cat house, there's a, a very legitimate, yes, it's, is healing touches or something like that?
Essential touch.
Essential touch.
Yeah.
Very legitimate. And there are times when someone needs massage. When I was running marathons, after a marathon, a, a good professional massage was very helpful. In the past couple of years, and I have heard this story, I'm not sure how true it is, but I, I understand Santa Maria kicked some of the Chinese massage parlors out of town, and they landed here in Lompoc. I think we've since closed two of them. But if we could somehow define a legitimate and an illegitimate massage parlor and have some control over those, I'd like to see some language in there. I don't know what the language is, but yes, sir.
If, if I may, the state actually has taken a shot at trying to assist cities with that, and putting some the best light that I can.
Okay.
They have created a system where masseuses and massage businesses now can receive certifications from the state, a new state commission that was created. And if they get that certification, the city actually can't treat them any differently than they would any other professional service. So if, if they don't have that certificate, the city can be very restrictive with them. So that may be a way of, of getting to the point where you were trying to get, because the state is supposed to, and I think they've been doing a pretty good job so far, of investigating those people that get those certificates, before they can get the certificates, going through some training and issuing the certificates. And once they get them, they can locate pretty much anywhere a lawyer, doctor, or acupuncturist could locate in the city. Without the permit, you can say you have to go through a CUP process or something.
Okay. Well, I think I've gotten myself in enough trouble for one night. I will step down for a while.
Well, I have to tell you that if it hadn't been for Carrie, an essential touch, when I got a knot in a muscle under my shoulder, I probably would have been suicidal. It was, it's the worst pain I've ever had. So she saved me. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pencil in the massage parlors with state certificates in the permitted, and then in the conditional, I'll put in without, and you, you guys can work on that. Joe, could you, could you talk about churches with regard to this, please?
Several years back, I don't remember when exactly, two or three, the federal government passed a law, and it's called, the acronym for it is R-L-U-P-A, and it stands for Religious Land Use and Institution Protection Act. And basically, what it says in simplified terms is, a city can't treat a church any different than other public assembly uses. So if, if the city permits social clubs, or theaters, or some other kind of public assembly use in a particular area without a CUP, they have to treat a church the same way. It doesn't mean a church has to be permitted in every zone, but if a public assembly use is a permitted in, in a particular zone, then a church use also is permitted there. So some of the references to conditional permits where the churches are, for example, on the page two of five, where, one, two, three, four, up from the bottom, where it says places of assembly, including walk-in theaters, is permitted, and then in that same line, in the next column, it says conditionally permitted, we'd actually have to move churches over to the permitted. And that's true with, on page three of five, three up from the bottom, where it says conditionally permitted, there's churches. Well, there, up there, we have, we have a place called commercial studios and, and schools that probably is going to be required to be in there, because there's the community centers and social clubs that are also permitted uses.
Perfect, fixed. Okay, I'm sorry, who is next? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I had two comments quickly. I, and maybe we can make a compromise this way. I like the idea of sort of this large brush stroke change, you know, showing that we're, we're making some development in, in the right direction, and I support that idea. But as I stated before, I'm a little apprehensive about the Old Town area. Would you be okay with submitting this information to staff, knowing this is very preliminary, but creating two zones, keeping the Old Town Commercial District zone, and understanding that that's something we're going to have to look at and change and edit, but keeping that separate from the commercial success zone, general?
Actually, I'm told that the, an easy way to do this would be to make it all one, but have an overlay for the downtown. And what the overlay could do would be to address the parking, number one, and also any other restrictions that we wanted to place, so that it would, we wouldn't have to have more zones, we could just have a downtown overlay. So I, the, the discussion might be, what is it that we don't want to have downtown? And then we can ask Joe if we can not have that.
Well, I think that's something that staff can prepare as well in doing the analysis. Then if, you know, maybe they can take into consideration my statements and give a suggestion, you know, maybe they feel that there should be two zones, or if they feel the overlay's possible, which, I mean, if that's even cleaner, I'm fine with that. And they can give a suggestion based on other cities that have downtown overlays, and what should be included and not included, and we can edit that and fine-tune that rather for, specifically for our community.
I think they're looking to us this evening for some suggestions on what we would like to, to give them some ideas. So I'd really kind of like to make a list of those uses that we would not be comfortable with downtown.
Well, as, I mean, I, I guess, really, this would be like a really starter list for me. I don't think that by any means this would be comprehensive.
No, I'm okay with that. I just, they need something to work from.
Right, so, um...
Joe? In the regard of something to work from, also, so that I'm clear, when we say downtown, could we have, so we have five people saying this is what we mean by downtown?
The consisting, the consisting Old Town Commercial District.
The Old Town Specific Plan area.
Yes.
Okay.
Understanding that it needs to be distinctive. I wish I had my, my document in front of me. When we went to the League California Cities Annual Conference, the city administrator and I went to one of the information sessions, and that's basically what they went through, was, was how, what businesses they saw as successful and unsuccessful, and how to make your downtown area distinctive. Two of the things that they did discuss that I can recall right now were the big box stores and the issue of, you know, whether or not you want to have large corporations or franchises. It's like I said, you know, do you want a McDonald's in your downtown area? I hate, I, it's not that I want to discriminate against McDonald's or anything, it was just, you know, somebody that I thought of that has gone into some downtown areas. Because it's, it's one of those things, is once they're already there, they're there. So you want to ensure that, you know, you're limiting that upfront. If that's not what you want, I'm just saying, you know. I understand that there should be some office space. I think that in general downtown, I know that there are quite a few residential, or, not residential, but realty offices. I, I've been to downtowns, and I do see that in some areas, but in a certain amount, I don't think that it should be on the court itself, but it should be on the periphery of the downtown area. Those are just things I can think of off the top of my head, but I think that there are many more and to shape it and to be, to shape our downtown to be what we really want it to include and what we want it to be. Now, I wanted to make a quick statement in, in general, before I get lost on my, on another train of thought, is I think that when we're talking about review measures, I, I looked at review measures in a different way than Councilmember Martner. I looked at it in, because we're doing something new, and that's, that's not, I would say, not generally used by many cities, I think that we need to have strict review measures to look at how successfully this is working. So I think adaptability is actually, was a great comment made by somebody in the public that, you know, we need to be adaptable in that sense, where if this is somehow not working, we need to be able to review this, whether it be annually, in order to change or shift certain things if we're figuring out it's not working in one area of our community. Understanding that, you know, adaptability may have been, he may have made it in a different context, but I use that word now in this context, because I feel that we need to, to be on top of that. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think we can say the word big box stores, but thinking about all the buildings that are in downtown now, if we had a space, a maximum space size of 10,000 square feet in a building, that would encompass every existing building, and that would be well below what any big box store wanted to have. And I think that's probably a legal way to do it, isn't it, Joe? Okay. And, and just, I'm sorry for the rest of you, but just so you know, looking, if you, if you look at three of, or two of five up at the very top, the reason those sizes were set up the way they were was to deal with the existing buildings. And one of the comments that I heard long ago was that we didn't have a maximum size limit, so a superstore limit, if you will, and that's how we ended up with 150,000 square feet and up is prohibited, because we really don't have the police and fire capacity to, to take care of a building that size anyway. So this kind of goes along that same line, and it, and it could work right into that. And Joe, can you not allow franchise locations? Or is there a way you could not allow franchise locations?
If there's other places in the city that, if you're saying in the downtown?
Yes.
Well, no, in the commercial, commercial success.
I, I think we could probably craft something that would cover that.
Okay. Because everybody's concerned having franchises in downtown, right? Councilmember Martner?
Well, you know...
Excuse me.
I think we're getting sidetracked here, because all I hear is, we need to restrict this, we need to restrict that, we need to restrict that, we need to restrict that. Okay, we don't want this many, you know, this many tattoo parlors here, we don't want, you know, franchise, we don't want stores that are 150,000 square feet or bigger. When I thought that this whole thing was about simplifying the process, simplifying such as if there is a business that wants to open, they can go through the city and get going. Okay? But what we're doing here right now is bringing little details and examples of restrictions that we want to put on this new simplified system. So I'm a little concerned, okay? Now, you just said, okay, retail store over 150,000 should not be allowed, they're going to be prohibited. And we're going to have this huge commercial zoning, which is all of H Street, Central, and Ocean. That means that we couldn't have a Super Walmart. Now, not that I care about Super Walmart, but there are members of this community that they think that that's a great idea. Do they know that we're going to go for this? Well, they're not here, they're not going to get to know. But the point is, is that we are adding restrictions instead of taking away restrictions. Now, I don't want a superstore in Lompoc. I think it's bad for the small business owners. But you know what? I mean, the public is the one that decides. And you know how the public decides? By shopping there or not shopping there. I believe in a free market economy. I believe if there is too many tattoo parlors, several of them are going to go out of business. I don't need to put a restriction on it. I believe that in a free market economy, if we have too many smoke shops with paraphernalia, and nobody goes in there, and they go out of business, so be it. It's a free market economy. And I, all, all I hear for all, from the mayor and the council members is restrictions. So I'm confused. I thought that what we're trying to do here is to simplify the process, so we don't get the complaints from customer X and customer Y saying that the city is so complicated, and the city does not allow me to open my business. Because there is too many restrictions, and too many processes, and too many confusing interpretations of the zoning, and what is allowed and what is not allowed. And now you're adding more. Sorry. I think we're kind of setting, going backwards here. Let's stick to the issue. The issue is simplify the process, not start dictating whether we need a Super Walmart or not, or whether we need a McDonald's in downtown, or whether we have too many tattoo shops. I don't think that's what this is about.
Thank you. Who was next? I'm confused.
I just wanted to respond in regards to downtown. Councilmember Martner, I'm a little bit confused, because your previous statement was about distinguishing downtown. So my suggestion to Mary Lynn was allow staff to come back with something, and I think what he wanted is more a list of things that, you know, it's very, very broad, but there's probably a few things that we don't want. So let's just get those out of the way and have those listed. So in fact, it's going to be much, much less cumbersome than what is currently in the Old Town Commercial District. So we are relieving quite a few restrictions by doing it this way, not implementing more, although part of the process is discussing if there are certain things that, as a body, we feel would inhibit the success of a downtown area, or would distinguish it from the rest of the general commercial zone.
You're only talking about the Old Town Specific Plan. This commercial success general is all of H Street, is all of Ocean Street, is all of Central Avenue, and that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the Old Town Specific Plan.
Correct. So the businesses that I'm giving him were only specific to Old Town.
Well, I was referring to all of the others.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Sorry, because I got a little bit confused by that. Thank you.
Which one? Eric, you haven't said a word. You're next.
Yeah, I haven't spoke yet. I wanted to bring up the Old Town. The, I'm kind of in favor here of just not reinventing the wheel, but making it roll. If we go to the attachment one, on page two, five here, of all of these permitted things, there's only two of them that are currently not listed in the Old Town Specific Plan. Medical and dental laboratories, offices and pharmacies is not listed in the Old Town Specific Plan, and repair of consumer goods is not listed in the Old Town Specific Plan. It is. And the prohibited uses, there is some automotive in the prohibited uses, but it's very limited. I mean, the light manufacturing is, is a prohibited, where this is a permitted. So that would be the only discrepancy between the two documents and the Old Town Specific Plan. So I, I mean, we have a very workable, viable document already in place with what we're trying to do here. We were talking about amusement arcades. We have some in town already that we haven't even heard anything about, and I don't know if they're in there with CUPs, but they're performing as businesses right now and being successful at it, I understand. I don't think that we're removing any standards by this, but I think that what we're doing is just removing the zoning. is just removing the zoning restrictions, and I would like to keep us focused on that right there. I, I personally think this document is that it is basically a 70% document. I'd love to be able to hand this to staff and say, this is what our input is, and let's go with it, and take it to the planning commission. I, I'm not having any difficulties here.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, a question, and then just a comment. Question is, as we're discussing things up here, I'm hearing some rumblings in the audience, and I was wondering if we would allow public comment after we're done, in case the public has any comments? That's the question is, if, okay, good, okay. Then another comment, Councilmember Martner, I, I completely understand your concern that we're, you, we say we're trying to simplify it, now we're putting all these restrictions. I take it a little bit differently. I believe we are trying to simplify it, but we're trying to have some exclusions, maybe not restrictions, but exclusions. Like, I personally, I do not want a bunch of adult businesses in the downtown area. I do not want a bunch of massage parlors in the downtown area. So I'm trying to get some restrictions, but making it easier for everyone else to open up businesses here. So I think we are simplifying it with this plan, and I agree with council member Starbucks that we're probably 70, 80% there, and I'm hoping at the end of the evening, we're going to turn it back over to staff and ask them to come back with a staff report for us, that we can, after they fine tune it with their professional opinion, that's what I'm hoping we get out of this evening. But, Councilmember Martner, I, I agree with you, we're supposed to simplify it, and I, I believe we will. All I'm asking for is a few restrictions, not, not more conditions, just more, just a few restrictive uses in here.
Okay, let's take a second for Joe, and then we'll take a second for some more public comment.
Thank you. I'd just like some clarification for myself. When we talk about franchises, what exactly did you mean? I mean, did you mean franchises like Starbucks? Did you mean franchises like fast food places? Did you mean, I mean, there's lots of things that could fall into category, you know, Gap stores, have, there are a lot of Gap stores, I mean, so I'm not sure what you were intending to include.
I think that was Councilmember Costa that was talking about that.
You know, honestly, I would like to refer back to some of the documents and, and actually speak to the speaker who presented that information at the conference, and also talk to our city administrator about that, because the way that they presented the information, I believe was in regards to signage, actually, because there was some limit on that, that then put a, put a limit on some of these things. So I don't want to, I don't want to say for sure what that was, I wasn't tr, I, I was going a little bit of a different direction than we're going this evening, so I'd have to bring that information back to staff, if council's okay with me doing that in the interim.
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As far as franchises in our downtown area, I believe, I'm not completely opposed to franchises. I mean, downtown, I, I'm not completely opposed to franchises. I mean, I'll, I'm going to use the term that was brought up already, McDonald's, it's franchise that everyone knows. You know what? I'm not opposed to a franchise. We've, we've had our Old Town Specific Plan, what's the date on that?
2000.
2000. So we've had it for 11 years now, and, you know, we're forcing, we're trying to keep the businesses from moving in, we're trying to limit them right now. I mean, I'm kidding. We, we have not been successful, okay? So what makes us think if we have a McDonald's, a, a Starbucks that wants to come into our downtown area, and we have some codes that makes the signage look nice, and maybe it's a, maybe it, their front is an old town appeal, I'm not completely opposed to a business moving to town like that. McDonald's are very, very popular. If we have people, we want people to come downtown strolling, shopping, and if they want to stop in and have a coffee and a hamburger at, at McDonald's, if they're coming down here to shop, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. So I'm not, I don't want to restrict hastily done franchises from our downtown area. I mean, I think we can do it properly and still get them to come.
Really quickly, before we go to public comment, Mr. Mayor, and again, I don't want to say that I'm opposed to a specific business, because that's not the case at all. What I'd really like to plant, for you to think about really quickly, is if you have a Starbucks and a McDonald's, then people aren't going to be buying coffee at Southside and at a locally owned restaurant. That, really downtowns are, you know, cultural centers, so when you're talking about culture, you want locally owned businesses, you want small businesses, you want artisan businesses, you want specialty businesses, you know, you want all of these things that aren't provided by certain business types, certain business models that come usually in a franchise package. And again, I'm not saying that I don't use franchises, that they're bad or anything. It's just something to put in, in your head to think about, and, and I'm, again, I'm saying that because it was presented to me as information of ways to make your downtown successful, and sometimes that requires those restrictions. Thank you.
And I have to say, I attended that same workshop, or part of it, and it was really good, but I don't remember a lot of it now. All right, coming back and we'll take some testimony on some ideas. Okay, Bobby? Don't sit down. You said you wanted to talk. Introduce yourself.
Okay, Bobby Rannie, a local resident. The thing I wanted to make, bring up was the fact that in a downtown, I like the idea. First of all, I want to thank all of you for taking the time to work on this and try and simplify, because our zoning has created a lot of problems. We don't have businesses coming here, they don't want to come here, and I think it's important that we do draw them in. But with the downtown area, we need to also remember that we need to have a combination of types of places. Yes, I like the specialty shops, and I like to go to them, and I like to go to the neat little food places, but a lot of times they're more expensive than other places, and if we only have those type of shops in the area, you're going to cut out half of your population for being able to afford to go into the downtown area. So it needs to be a combination, so that all of our residents have a chance to enjoy it and help support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ray, you already got two cuts of the apple. You don't get to talk again. I was nice to you the last time.
Mayor, councilmembers, my comment is that when, whatever decision you make, just clearly define what is ministerial, meaning over the counter, and, and that's the purpose of the zone. And I would agree that it's sometimes easier to pick very specific items out as exclusionary. Codes are codes, so building codes are building codes. You can't get around that. There's nothing you can do on this board to effectuate or change a building code, they're, they're determined by the state. Regulations that deal with some of the bars or alcohol or ABC, you can't get around them. But what you can do is just make it very clear that within this particular area, your zone clearly defines what is permissible through the ministerial, over the counter process, and what is not. And, and that's what makes it easier for businesses to determine the viable, economic viability of, of a potential business.
Nicholas Gonzalez?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Mary Saladino from Lompoc, and I have a few things I wanted to say. When I'm listening to all of you, you're raising lots and lots of questions. So far, no good answers, because I think you're considering so many things that even a designer would be having a little difficulty. But I want you to keep in mind that if you are going to constantly focus on old town, you will always remain old and dead, because what new business wants to come in and build a business in that old town? It's so ugly right now, I don't even like to walk down H Street, or I don't like to park my car on H Street. The sidewalks are terrible, they need to be steam cleaned, and the buildings are horrible. You cannot attract a business that other people are going to come from somewhere else to purchase that is built in an area like that. I'm sorry. An old town is a wonderful thing, when you have plenty of time to relax and just poke around and shop with nostalgia. And these days, with the economic conditions like they are, it's difficult for anybody to think about doing things like that. We're dying down to the basics. But I would like for you to consider areas in the city where tourism can be developed. Where can the buses go? Also, where is your industrial area? You are developing wine, an, an economy for the wine industry, almost in the industrial area, I think. Be honest, I haven't been to look, been over there to look, but at least one of them is over there, I think. Families like to go out to eat. We need nice places where families can come together and enjoy dining together, maybe with a view. What happened to the ba, public bathroom facilities project that you were working on before? Did that ever get off the ground? If you're going to have tourism and people walking around town, they're going to have to have a public bathroom system. And manufacturing is not a bad idea, if you want to grow, but you do need to find a, an appropriate place for manufacturing to happen. And how about your large truck parking? I think that was an argument that people were talking about several years ago. Did you ever find a place for the large trucks to park? Okay. Education is still a good thing. Are you promoting education in this town? If you want to attract people who are, are going to help your town to develop, education and the arts are a very important part of your design that you are creating here. And don't forget recreation, but keep the standards high. And I think your city attorney's statement that some standards are required by state is a good thing to keep in mind. But still, it's okay for cities to have certain standards as well. I think when you are thinking about going someplace where you like to shop, or where you like to purchase things, or just have a good time away from home, you also think about certain standards. And keep that in mind. And I think there are some restrictions that must maintain the standards that we have, and there are other standards that we don't want in this city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Morris. I own the property at 119 East Ocean Avenue, Plum Perfect Plumbing. And I'd like to thank you, the council and the mayor, for giving us the opportunity to voice our opinions tonight. A couple of things, when we bought that property, we were assured by the city that they wanted a business in there, a retail plumbing business, and we do service and repair, we run some trucks out of there, too. And from the time we bought it, till the time we were finally granted permission to open the door, it was 18 months trying to deal with the regulations, and during that time, Old Town Architectural Guidelines were implemented, which stymied everything. Anyway, so that's why the place looks like a gas station, because we're just not able to make it look like something that we, and we tried repeatedly to make it look like something better, but rather than cooperation from the, the city, and I don't know which department of the city was involved with that, we never got a, a encouragement to, to say, well, look, we'd like it to look better, and if you do this, and this, and this, we'll work with you on some of these other things. It was just, no, we don't want that. So back to the drawing board, start over. And it took 18 months to finally get to permission to just, don't change it, just open the door. So new glass, turn on the lights, open the door. And, but let me remind you that, you know, I look around the auditorium tonight, there's lots of men and women in here that put everything they have, like we did, into that little business. And like some in here, and especially for me, it was one shot. Everything I had has gone into that business. And so for me, I'm not going to try again to go get something done with that business. I'm just not going to do it. I'm over 65 years old, and I'm just not going to try and deal with the regulations that are likely involved still in trying to remodel that business and make it look like something really nice. So what I would encourage the, the council to consider is, when you've got someone before you willing to spend every penny they have, try and find something good in what they're doing, and deal with them, work with them a little bit, rather than just flat out refuse to see anything good in what they're doing. Because like me, in my case, a one shot, and that was all I could do. 18 months of butting my head against the wall. It was almost as though we were trying to speak with someone who didn't understand the language we were trying to talk. And it, it's just a frustration for us. But, you know, relaxing the guidelines in the Old Town and making it apply mainly to new construction, I think that's a good idea. Relaxing a little bit on some of the businesses that want to remodel, that's a very good idea. But I'm with some of the others, and Mary, I don't think old is bad.
I think your business looks beautiful.
Well, it looks as good as we, as good as we had money to do, thank you. But when we try to see what good we can, see the good points in something that's being presented to the, the city for remodeling or improving a business, we look for the good, and maybe a few changes along the line, and try and encourage things to go, rather than just to stifle construction and new work down there, it really would be a good thing. Thank you.
Roger?
Yes.
It seems to me in the conversation we had, it had to do with front fascia height and something, was, could you, could you just kind of briefly describe what it was you were trying to do that you couldn't do?
One of the requirements for the Old Town Architectural Reviews, with all buildings to be remodeled in any way, if the facade was to change at all, had to meet the Old Town requirements of 20 feet. And we wanted to add on to the building, we were going to add about 1,500, 1,800 square feet, I can't remember what it is exactly now, but it was a substantial addition for us. And because the, the old part of the building didn't comply with that, we were just flat out told, no, you're not going to do it. And to, and then it was suggested by someone along the line, well, put a, put some sort of a dummy facade up on the building and make it 20 feet tall. Our building is 13 foot six, and to put something up there that would withstand the winds that we get in Lompoc, 80, 90, 100 miles an hour, whatever, would be, well, I don't know how to do that. And I, I seriously doubt whether we could afford to do that, but that was the real, the sticking point for us, try and make something 20 feet tall.
Thank you. Okay. Wait, wait, Councilmember Costa?
Mr. Morris, I have a quick question for you all.
Roger, Roger, come on back.
Just, when you were going through your process, was undergrounding of utilities a big issue?
It was $3,000 worth of work that we had to, I don't remember whether that was what the permit cost, or whether it was the whole thing, but I remember it was about $3,000, and it was a major expense for us. I would have rather spent the money elsewhere. And now we have underground utilities, and our, it, it's very nice, but to drive down the alley and say, oh, that building looks really good, it has underground utilities, you can't tell, because every other business on that whole alley has overhead power lines, phone, TV, the whole thing.
Kind of miniscule in your case. You didn't have to give up an easement, did you?
I don't remember, no, I don't think so. No, I, our pullbox is right on the property line in the back alley.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Manning, Downtown businessman, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and city administrator. It's really simple for me, I'm sitting there listening to everything that's going on tonight. All the simplification is the right way to go. We need to encourage business to come here, not discourage them, and that's going to work. All you have to do is focus on it and make it work. So go to it.
Thank you.
Robert Schmiedeke, one more time. Light manufacturing, that could be a jewelry store, a t-shirt shop, that imprints t-shirts, a jeweler who puts jewelry together in a window. We're not here to save the Southside Coffee Shop. If the Southside is desirable for customers to come in and sit down, and the atmosphere is what they seek, and the price is right, they'll do it. We don't have to protect them from Starbucks. We don't. What we need to do is put Starbucks in there, and somebody will stay, somebody will go. I don't care. Hopefully, they'll both stay. Hopefully, this town will grow that way. If you want to see how not to do it, go to Old Town, and observe the out of business old jewelry stores and the, and the empty storefronts, and look at that, look at it very closely. Take a look at our famous bar down there, I think it's known as the raunchiest bar in the country, or something?
Fourth.
The fourth raunchiest, we didn't even make number one. I am devastated.
Die Hard.
You know, we've got to open our community up, we've got to move out of the 60s. One of our founding fathers once said, and you're trying to do this now, this is not a democracy, this is a representative republic. That's why we elected you to represent our wishes. The government that governs least governs best. The government that governs least governs best, and that's what you are attempting to do. I hope all of you go in that direction. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Maria Ginaga. I'm a business owner. Sitting out in the public and listening to all of you speak gets me a little upset, because being a business owner takes a lot to put a business together, especially when you're going to go out there, seek the place where you're going to put your business in. I personally struggled for eight years to find an office for my real estate office. Everywhere where I thought I wanted to place it would be a great location, couldn't because of the old downtown rules that you had. But then you go to Paso, you go to Los Alamos, you go to Solving, and what do you see there? Real estate office, along with other offices, insurance offices, that sort of thing. We also, my husband and I did purchase a building. We were approached by gaming, actually, the ones are probably next to the smoke shop, because they thought it was a perfect location for all the middle school kids to come and do the gaming. But because it was a conditional use permit, and I think they did the research at the city, wasn't feasible for them to do it there. So which brings me to my point. If you have too many conditional uses, rather than specific ministerial uses, you almost certainly place a large obstacle in front of small businesses due to economic uncertainty. So a lot of people are not even willing to spend that extra money to do the research and go see what it takes to obtain the conditional permit or go through the process. It's not just, I mean, we're facing economic times, hard economic times. And yes, although we may not want big-box stores coming into our downtown, but if you go to downtown Santa Monica, if you go to Soundless Abyssal, you have Skechers there. I mean, they brought in those businesses there, but their facade is within the old downtown. I mean, I think that's one of the requirements when big-box stores come into old downtowns. At this point, having two young children, I would open up to any business coming in, you know, whether it's Skechers, or Gap, or... It didn't matter where in the city, but I think we need to leave, we need to be more flexible, not just for the big-box stores, but also for your local business owners who have a vested interest in this community. Because big-box stores come and go. If they don't make the sales, they're going to leave. Us business people who live in this community and have a vested interest are here to stay in the long run. So I would appreciate if you just made the whole system better, or easy, not easier, but just welcoming, and say, how can I help you? How can I, how can we make it? How can we help you make your dream come true? You know, there's a lot of entrepreneurs out there that I'm sure will welcome a small restaurant in the downtown, but it takes money, a lot of money. And going through all these permits, and it's just a lot of money. So take that into account when you do come up with the downtown limitations that you're going to set there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Toni Astini, Lompoc resident. Good job, Maria. I was pretty much going to do the same thing. I'm not quite sure, first of all, what our overlay is for the old downtown. I mean, is it two blocks, east, south, northwest, four blocks, one way? I'm not really sure what Old Town consists of. Does anybody on the council know either?
Yes.
What is our downtown area? Because, okay, when you look at that overlay, to consider, we do want this to be easier, to open our arms, to welcome new business, and I think, just like what Maria said, the zonings you're working on, thank you so much, on writing them, so they're more general, not so specific. We have people walking into our offices on a daily basis, want to open businesses, and the zoning is for a record shop, a laundry mat, or some things, some things that aren't even... I mean, who goes to a record shop? I mean, if you've got a zoning here for records, I mean, there are uses for old records, and people do look for old records. But what I'm trying to get down to, they're so detailed in what they absolutely can be that eliminates all the things that it could be. So just consider those when you're putting down your words to write these new zoning laws. For the city, I think downtown area, I think is great. This probably goes to the economic development, but is, consider pedestrianizing our downtown area, slowing the traffic down, making it so it's one-way, each-way maybe. People don't stop and shop and eat and spend unless they're walking, not just zoom-zooming by, and that's kind of what we do right now. We have a highway going north, south, east, west with our 246 and Highway 1. That might help and encourage businesses to come down to our Old Town market area there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Morris. I've lived in Lompoc for 50 years. I came from Sacramento, and my family was in the fast-food business in Sacramento before we came here. We had the A&W, we had Colonel Sanders Downtown on G Street, and a lot of other things, and it was very successful. So when you start planning your downtown, remember those places were the successful ones here. The fast-food business was one thing. And it was just kind of coincidental that I was on the phone talking to a friend of mine who runs PF Chang's in Sacramento, and that's a, kind of like a chain, and very successful. The governor lives upstairs, and I hear some of the council members here, they want to pick and choose who comes downtown in Lompoc, those kind of businesses, or keeping those businesses out, the South Side coffee shop. And I was just talking to my friend with PF Chang's about the South I Street property where the Colonial Inn used to be. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. And that was kind of the property they're looking at, but if you're going to start picking and choosing what can go there and what can't, I was just on the phone to him, and I heard the discussion of, oh, we don't want this, you know, we have to be open-minded about things like that. And also, I live in Santa Barbara half the time. I developed part of State Street. We have California Pizza Kitchen, we have McDonald's, we have Jack-in-the-Box, everything on State Streets, probably the highest real estate in probably California, and they're mixing their city that. They're not relying on just mom-and-pop things. So let's keep, I'll just keep our downtown Lompoc like that, because I know when I came here in the '60s, we had the drive-ins and everything, and that made the downtown really nice. So when you go to choose about picking and choosing who can come, or what small coffee shop, or what big coffee shop, let's remember, let's all work together, and maybe we can get some of these bigger, nicer places to come here, too. So thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Okay, you get one minute, and you have to say your name.
Thanks, pal. Ray Leslie, Lompoc. I think that some of you are taking this out of contents a little bit. The zoning doesn't have to do with loud music and that. There's codes that govern all of that. Don't shake your head, it does. They have codes against a lot of different things, and that's what we have the enforcement for, you know? We can get a code enforcement, you go over there, they shut it down, they don't let them do things like that. Zoning is a totally different thing. We're not going to allow a wrecking yard down there where they're cutting and banging and using torches and all that kind of stuff. There's certain things that won't be allowed, because it's not zoned for it, and it's never going to happen. But code enforcement is going to step in and say, hey, you can't do this, and you can't do that. I think we need to be liberal enough that we can do it as a group, our city council, our building department, and be liberal enough that we can understand what people want. To build up our Old Town again, I'd love it. I don't know if it can happen. When Morris was there in all these stores, I mean, everybody liked it. But you can't, as he just said earlier, you can't kick certain people out because you don't like what they're doing, or you don't like a fast food. You can't do that. I mean, I'd like to see Old Town build up like some of the little towns like Las Gatas that I lived in. I mean, it's just beautiful, but you have to be able to rent your place, you have to be able to make it good for the people that own the properties. They can't just let them sit there until somebody comes along and wants one of these. I think with a group that works hard together, you can get the right people in there and do the right job. I know you can. But again, I think that you're looking at multi-code enforcement that's going to take care of what you're talking about.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last chance? Going, going, gone. Okay. So one takeaway from that is maybe we need to look at the conditionally permitted uses and see if we want to move some of those to the left. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a couple of comments regarding noise and so forth. In this document, it's very specific about existing buildings. And it says, "Commercial enterprise being established in existing structures with no plans to alter the exterior of the building or increase the building footprint are not subject to any specific development standard." So you can do whatever you want inside that building. So that's what this reads, so perhaps we need to change the language. But I do not agree that we should be allowed, and this is in page 4 or 5 under existing buildings, I do not believe that we should allow to have a commercial enterprise with no plans to alter the exterior of building not to be subject to any specific development standard. I think that they should be subject to a development standard. I think we need to have standards in the city, and that's what that comment was referring to. The second comment that I want to make about Old Town, I think, you know, I think everybody that spoke about Old Town is right. I don't think we should be restricting what goes into Old Town or not. And the reason for that is, you know, there is a document in place, that document has proven that it has not worked. Now, maybe we need to review that document and look at those, those things were written back in 2000? Is that where the specific plan was? Maybe they need to be changed, okay? But if we're going to start discussing whether we need a franchise, or whether we can have a franchise or not have a franchise, or whether we can have a big store or not a big store, I think that debate cannot happen with five individuals up here. I think that debate has to work itself out with the public. I really, truly believe that the public will vote with their wallet, and they go wherever they feel they can go, and we cannot restrict it at this level. Now, do we need to protect downtown? Protect it from what point of view? Architecturally, perhaps? I don't know. That's another set of restrictions that are going to be coming in, the architectural standards, and it's going to go to the planning commission. But really, what needs to be discussed here, are we willing to have those few blocks be different than the rest? And do we want to give the staff direction to have those blocks be different? Do we just want to put it all in into the general zoning? Do we want to do an overlay? Do we want to keep the specific plan in place? I think that is a direction that the staff is looking for. And then the specifics as to what that would be, if we want to provide restrictions, or do an overlay, or whatever, I don't feel comfortable making those decisions. I think the public needs to make those decisions. And that's where I am.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I wanted to clarify, the PF Chang's in Sacramento, I've been there, actually, I think it's a fabulous restaurant, it's in their downtown area, not in their Old Town area?
It's on 16th and...
Correct, yeah. Right, so that's in their downtown area, not in their...
No, that's in the Old Town.
Yeah, in the, correct, thank you. It is currently in their downtown area, their Old Town area.
The Sherbrooke Lighting Agency built in 1925.
Their Old, what's considered now their commercial Old Town area is actually separate, and it has quite a few restrictions on what business and business types can go down in that location. Down by the river, thank you, by the railroad.
We're talking about the Embarcadero, that's...
Mr. Mayor, you may want to remind the audience that we're not in a dialogue between the audience and the council.
Yeah, let us take care of it. I think the difference that we're talking about is the, what you said, the Embarcadero down there by, between the freeway and the river versus uptown.
Correct. I think with Lompoc, the issue becomes that we see our Old Town and our downtown as synonymous, and I know that there's been a lot of folks that talked about semantics being an issue that way. But I just want to clarify that it's not restrictions. I don't necessarily want to pull off all restrictions and, you know, make it kind of a free-for-all, in a sense. I want to make it much easier for businesses to develop and to go into locations, and so we need to make sure that the zoning facilitates that. What I'm in favor of is looking at the commercial success zone general, however, looking at a way to keep downtown distinct. It sounds like the public is not in favor of creating any restriction, so maybe we need to, you know, go back to the original idea that Mayor Lynn proposed. However, I think that, for me, downtown needs to be something distinct, and I would hate to see us lose that in this process. So I would like to hear what the rest of council thinks.
I guess, having spent three years trying to get a business open in downtown, and having talked to a lot of other people with regard to downtown, I think that we could just roll it into the rest of our ordinance, and we would be, we would be fine. Here's some of the truisms that I learned. Today, there are two things that drive a decision on what you can do with a building. The first one is, and the most important one is, is it a permitted use where I can go in and open? Okay? You cross that hurdle. The next one has to do with what the occupancy of the building has been in the past. So for instance, if you have a building that's been a mercantile occupancy, which was what most of them are, and you want to convert it to a restaurant, a nightclub, a wine-tasting facility, a banquet hall, any of those things, you're going to go to an A occupancy. And that brings in a whole new set of conditions. It's basically, you have to bring the building to current code. If you go back, if you go back in with another mercantile use, then you don't have to do those things. You only have to do the ADA requirements. If you come in with an A use, then you have to have, you probably have to have sprinklers, you have to have restrooms to match the occupancy, you have to have a structural review to make sure that the building meets current seismic standards. So the level of difficulty converting downtown building to an A use, which is a restaurant, a wine-tasting, whatever, is really extreme. And I'm not going to tell you it's impossible, it is surely difficult, and we spent a great deal of money being unsuccessful at it. So for a coffee shop to come in, for instance, that's an A use, and they're going to have to, they're going to have to come to these new, to the new code. I guess I would rather err on the side of making it easier, and if a year from now we realize it's a little too easy, we could, we could come back. But so much of it is driven now by what the building can do and what the costs are with regard to that building, that I think it's almost self-regulating. If we hadn't seen a thrift store explosion, and the interesting thing is, the more thrift stores you get, the more customers you get, which gets you more thrift stores, and then they start to change from thrift stores to more antique and collectible stores. It's an evolutionary process. Old downtowns, wherever they are, start out with thrift stores, furniture stores, because both of those use large amounts of square footage and don't have a high revenue return for the square footage. So that's kind of the evolution. And then the next evolutionary step is they kind of evolve into more antique and collectible stores, which we're already seeing with Sweet Repeats and Teddy. And then the next step after that is, because you're getting more traffic, and then you bring in some offices, and you have people down there, then you start seeing more restaurant uses. And then the next step after that is, you tend to get a nightclub, because that's what downtowns tend to have. And then the specialty stores and the more specialty restaurants come in. It's kind of an evolutionary cycle that a lot of downtowns go through. And the gal that put on that downtown program at the League of Cities, I stood and chatted with her a little bit after. And also, I looked at the life cycle regeneration of some downtown Santa Monica... And also, I looked at the, the life cycle regeneration of some downtown Santa Monica passerobles. And I had a business in passerobles when they were kind of restarting their downtown. So I think if we make it, excuse me, if we make it easier to open businesses, then downtown will be successful more quickly. And, you know, the one takeaway I had from the audience was, maybe we need to look at this list of conditionally permitted uses, because most of these were just move-overs from the existing ordinances. And maybe there's some things that don't need to be in there. Maybe we need to just kind of go down that list and look at that. But first, Councilmember Lingel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what I was going to recommend. We take a look at that and move some of them to the left, because this whole process of becoming, or for us, becomes a more user-friendly downtown, or user-friendly city, is to become less restrictive. So I, I agree with you, I'd like to see some of those move over to the left. And we've heard several times the word, more ministerial, less conditional permitting. I'd like to see that go into more of our terminology from now, now on.
Permitted uses are ministerial uses, conditional uses are...
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're... And then we talked about, you had mentioned the thrift stores. Before I moved here, I lived in Ventura for 30 years. The old town area of Ventura was nothing but a bunch of thrift stores. It was almost, almost slummy back 30, 40 years ago. And now you go down to downtown Ventura, it's vibrant. There's nightclubs, there are McDonald's, there's Starbucks. And I think we have to look at what we've done so far with our old town area. We've got an old town specific plan that is now 12 years old. And really, we have done very little, if anything, in the downtown area. So become less restrictive. If a, here again, I'm gonna say it again, if a McDonald's wants to consider moving in here, make the, the front look kind of downtown-ish, but let's not tell them they can't move into the downtown area. Yeah, I, I'm not recommending this, but yesterday I was driving, and when I drive, just like many of us, we start thinking. And I forget which gentleman said, he had a A&amp;W franchise someplace. And I was thinking, if we want to make Lompoc a destination, we always talk about making it a destination, what if somehow, as people drove into Lompoc, they, they saw a big Golden Arches in our, someplace in Lompoc? The real Golden Arches. And maybe Colonel Sanders, Sanders standing on a corner, holding up his bucket of chicken. We have enough hamburger stands, but what if we had a Bob's Big Boy with a pudgy little guy standing out there with a burger on his hands? I'm not saying we're gonna do this. But we have to, when we think about, become a destination, we have to think about being less restrictive. If someone wants to put up a Bob's Big Boy in front of their restaurant, maybe we should consider it. A&amp;W was a, it's an icon. So, again, just let's be less constrictive. Let's look at moving some of these conditional permits over to the permitted message. Then I would like to see us ask staff if they need any more direction. But I'd like to send it back to them, have their professional opinion, and bring us back a staff report. That's what I'm hoping we get out of this evening.
Okay, don't turn off your mic, because you can start at the top of the conditionally permitted and go down the column, and we'll talk about them.
Okay. Well, tattoo parlors, we'll leave in the conditionals.
Well, let's start from the top and go down.
Okay. Retail sales in consumer goods, up to 150 square feet?
Hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred fifty thousand square feet. I believe that should probably be a permit, conditionally permitted. I would have no problem with that.
Okay.
Service businesses with more than five fleet vehicles. Well, here again, I, I'm gonna say that that's probably okay in the conditionally permitted areas. Restaurants, drive-through with sidewalk services or ABC-type 47 full-service bars. They'd have to have an ABC license. I wouldn't mind letting that over into the permitted area. We may want to discuss that a little bit.
If they have a beer and wine license, it's permitted. The only license that would be conditional would be if they had a hard liquor license.
We've got several in the downtown area right now, in the old town area.
Well, let's take, let's pull up and see what everybody else thinks. Let's take these one at a time. Anybody have an opinion on that? Councilmember Costa?
Mary Lynn, did we include nightclubs to that list?
Yes, I did. I put those in conditionally permitted, based on our previous discussion. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, on the restaurants' drive-through, I think that should go over to permitted. There's no room downtown for a drive-through restaurant anyhow.
Okay. Yeah, this is for the whole city. So if they wanted to put a drive-through in, it would be a conditionally permitted use, rather than just a permitted use? Councilmember Martner?
Well, regarding the full-service bar, my understanding that that decision is really based on existing businesses. I mean, we went through that process before. The old town area has more full-service liquor licenses than what is usually allowed according to the standards of California. You know, given the crime rate, given the square footage, given what exists there. It's saturated. There's plenty of bars in old town, okay? So I don't know how we get around those regulations. We can put it in the permitted, so they don't have to go through conditional use permit, but they're still gonna be bogged down by the state regulation. So it's kind of a, okay, fine, put it in the permitted area, but that doesn't necessarily simplify your process, okay?
You know, the chief of police has the final say on those, too.
The chief of police can only make a recommendation. We went through this once regarding, actually, what the mayor was trying to do during the wine center. And we had to designate the old town area as a wine center attraction, development of business, whatever. And the whole council voted for this, so the chief would have the discretion to allow it. So it still had to go through a process. And then after that, it still had to go through the state.
And that's exactly what I'm saying. Put it in the permitted areas. If, we will allow it if they have been able to obtain the ABC license, which, Councilmember Martner, you're right. It's, right now, it is saturated, that they probably would not get it anyway. At least, we're not saying you cannot open it up. If you have the ability to get the license, we're not going to restrict you from opening up a business there. So I'd say, put it in the permitted area. It's up to them, then, to go ahead and get their license. That's all I'm saying on that.
Okay, everybody good with that?
Mary Lynn, the only thing remaining under conditionally permitted is nightclubs?
Nightclubs and sidewalk service, because sidewalk service requires the permission of the city to use the sidewalk. Because it's not their sidewalk, so it has to be conditioned by us.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, but it wouldn't necessarily need to be a conditional use permit through the planning process. It could be an encroachment permit through the Public Works Department, so...
Okay, and we can take that out, too.
I'm not suggesting which way to go, I'm just...
No, I would, I would be in favor of simplification. I, I just put it there because of how it was placed in the, in the old town ordinance. Okay. So now, the only thing we have left there are now nightclubs.
Okay, and that, I think that's appropriate. Food production and processing, less than 5,000 square feet. On what we consider food production and processing, to me, that's almost like a bakery. I mean...
The example here in town would be the tortilla factory and two bakeries. Those are both food production facilities.
I mean, I have, I have no problem with either one of those in that area. As a matter of fact, it'd be kind of neat. I mean, bakeries, definitely, in the area, I'd love to have some, the smell of fresh baked goods as I'm strolling the streets in our downtown area.
Don't say downtown, this is citywide.
Citywide, yeah, okay, citywide, yeah.
All right.
I mean, I, I don't see why we'd restrict a bakery, or even the tortilla factory there. I mean, I think it'd be a nice thing to have in there.
Okay. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Is it your understanding that anything then above or more than 5,000 square feet would be prohibited? In the commercial area, that would have to then go to an industrial area?
Yes, that's, that's what we pulled out of other things. But it doesn't necessarily have to be so. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you. I don't know where all of these restrictions and these conditional use permits came from, but I'm gonna make a request to the staff, when they bring back the staff report, to provide that side of, why are they there, to start with? Is there anything that we don't know about, that we, now that we're going down this line? And is there anything particularly, particular about a food production and processing that needs to be conditionally used permitted? Please do provide that in the report, if there are any arguments for it. We cannot find any arguments right here, right now, but that doesn't mean that there might not be some arguments, okay? So I just want to make sure that the staff is aware to bring about those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martner. That's, that's exact, that's exactly why I wanted to go back to staff to get their professional opinion, because you're right. We don't know if there's any conditions or restrictions on that, and they would know. So I agree with you that they put that in their staff report. The next one, open display of vehicle sales, new and used campers, RVs, motorhomes, boats, and motorcycles. I really have no problem with leaving that in the conditional permitted area in our downtown area.
Citywide, think citywide.
Citywide, yeah, thank you. Any, I don't know how everyone else feels.
I think the use is large enough and complex enough that it needs to be reviewed. Councilmember Costa?
Yeah, Mary Lynn, I just wanted to confirm that, you know, vehicle sales, are we talking about, you know, is there a size restriction? So if there's a dealer that has, you know, smaller off-road vehicles, would that be included? I know that beforehand, it was, that was considered an open display for vehicle sales previously, was it not? That was under a conditional use permit, where now the RV parking, or, excuse me, the RV sales location is on Ocean Avenue?
Let's see.
I just wanted to be sure that that was in...
In some of the zones now, it's not permitted. In some of the zones, it's conditionally permitted. And in some of the zones, there's no conditional use permit required. So it's all across the gamut, citywide now. So the question that we need to ask ourselves is, is it in the best interest of the public to have this as a conditionally permitted use? Or, you know, is it more or less, if the space will permit it? I mean, if you take the, the two most recent examples, Pacific Coast RV moved in, that happened to be a lot where it was permitted. And they just opened up and away they went. And the used car sales lot at Ocean and JKL, wherever it was, the old Texaco station, that was a pre-existing non-conforming use, and they went in there and opened up, because it was a pre-existing non-conforming use. But if they hadn't been there, they couldn't be there. And then the same thing is true, the little used car lot at Laurel and H. That, that was a permitted use at that location and a pre-existing use. So the question is, does, do these need to be regulated, or do they not? I mean, frankly, if it was me, I wouldn't regulate them, but I picked up what was in some of the other ordinances and brought that forward. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you do bring up a good point. It depends where it goes. And I think this is, we're getting trapped in this whole thing. Granted, you know, the way now is just so cumbersome. But I think the reason why it became cumbersome was exactly for what we're talking about here, okay? It depends where it goes, whether it's okay or not. Not all downtown, not all Ocean Street or H Street are the same. There is residential, there is schools, there is all kinds of things. So unfortunately, it's, it almost goes into the, it goes into a conditional use permit, because it needs to be looked at. What is gonna be the adverse effects, the traffic, the noise, the this and the that, and that's why it's there. Now, we're gonna remove it. We may find ourselves, the things are gonna go in places where we're gonna get a huge, we don't know the consequences, because it didn't go through that process. So I just, you know, I am, I am kind of torn, because I can envision there's some situations where we might allow this, that it just gets automatically permitted. But it might go in the wrong place. And whether it's gonna be business owners nearby, or residential, or schools, or whatever, police activity, I don't know. So there's gotta be some oversight, as opposed to just opening it totally up. That's the problem.
Councilmember Lingel?
Well, Councilmember Martner, that's why we're, we are leaving that in the conditionally permitted, or conditionally permitted area, because I agree with you on that. We're, but we're leaving it in, it has to have a conditional permit.
I'm emphasizing the point, why it needs to be there, as opposed to just opening it all up.
And I think we all agree that it should be there. And I think we did.
Councilmember Costa, then. Get your light on.
All I was gonna say is, I just don't think we, I mean, I agree, it should be conditionally permitted, because we wouldn't want to lose a sale to the Vons parking lot.
Okay, moving right along. Next one down, Bob.
Vehicle repair service garages and refueling stations. Again, I believe exactly what we, Councilmember Costa was talking, or Councilmember Martner was talking about, where it is in the area, I think that should remain in the conditionally permitted areas, in my opinion.
I agree. We already moved type 47 licenses out of the restaurant side, so I would think we would want to take them out of the community center and social club as a conditional use, using the same logic.
Right.
Okay. And then, what do you think about tattoo parlors, smoke shops, and pawn shops? And frankly, the one with the pawn shop was in the old ordinance, and that's why I carry it over to this one, because I didn't, I didn't change much, I just consolidated. So let's, maybe let's take it one bite at a time. Personal services, I wrote in here, massage parlors with a state certificate were a permitted use, based on what the city attorney had discussed. And then, how do we feel about tattoo parlors, smoke shops, and pawn shops? Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bob.
My feeling is, if we take one of those at a time, pawn shops, I would say permitted. I mean, it's, I think, I don't see any problems with that, so I'd...
Okay, how about everybody else? Pawn shops? Looking for a nod up or down, or left or right, or... Okay, we'll take pawn shops out.
Okay. Tattoo parlors, smoke shops, I would leave in the conditionally permitted.
And then massage without certificates.
I'd like to ask why?
Why what?
Why they should be conditionally permitted at tattoo shops?
For exactly, for exactly your argument before, depending on where it is in our area. I mean, if it's down at the end of Ocean, permitted. If it's in a corner of H and Ocean, maybe we don't want to permit it.
Why not? I mean, do they provide some specific issue as far as safety? I mean, again, you know, it's an arbitrary thing. Are we under a perception that tattoo shops can be a bad thing?
No, I, as a matter of fact, I said it earlier, I have nothing against the tattoo shops. We've got three in town, some people talk against them, or say that we shouldn't have them. I have nothing against them. I don't have a tattoo, but that's by my own preference. I mean, it's not visible, anyway. No, I'm just kidding. No, I just think if we're, if we are trying to promote our, our city, just like you were saying earlier, let's promote our city, make it more beautiful, I think there's some things that we probably don't want in certain areas. This, I'm just, I'm actually repeating what you were arguing earlier. So, in my opinion, you can voice your opinion. My opinion, I'd like to have the tattoo parlors and smoke shops. Not that they can't be there, I'd just like to see them permitted.
Council, nope, nobody else, okay. Self-service laundries.
Yeah, I have no idea. I, I'm stumbled on this one. I, I know that self-service laundries are absolutely essential for a lot of people living in this community. And if we're going to say that we're only gonna have them in certain areas, where we, we have some high-density areas, that self-service laundries are absolutely essential, so...
Well, no, you can have it anywhere, you just have to come in and get a conditional use permit to have it. So the question is, does it rise to the level of the need for conditional use permit or not?
Maybe the only, let's see...
Generally, the subject is parking. That's how they end up in this category, I believe.
You know, I, I'm having trouble with this one. I, I'd like to hear from the other councilmembers, I, I just don't know on this one.
You were faster, Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I think pulling it out of the conditionally permitted is fine with me. My assumption is that all of... My assumption is that all of these recommendations we're making to staff, and as Councilmember Martyr said, they'll return if for some reason there's an issue that we've moved it from one to the other. So tentatively, I think it's fine being permitted and not conditionally permitted.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I mean, just if the parking is an issue, when you go in to get the permit, the parking is always designated anyhow, many spaces you need to provide.
Okay, I move it over. Hospitals and nursing homes. Again, those are because of the impact of the size of the facility and the amount of parking required and those things.
So they should remain in the conditionally permitted.
My personal opinion is yes, but I can go either way. I don't see anybody looking like they want to move them. Okay, next.
Okay, maybe we want to break these down a little bit, too. It includes churches, dance halls, amusement arcades, and caretaker residences.
Church, church is already moved over.
Okay, church is already moved over to the permitted.
Correct.
Okay.
And now's the other ones.
Dance halls, amusement arcades, amusement arcades, I would, in my opinion, I'd leave them, I'd move them over to permitted. Dance halls and caretaker residences. Well, let's say.
What allows you to do is to have a caretaker residence at a business where you wouldn't normally have one. So for instance, a church might have one being located in a commercial zone where they might in other ways be able to have one. Or a funeral parlor would have staff on site where they wouldn't normally be allowed to have it. It gives the planning commission the opportunity to put a caretaker residence in for when it's appropriate to the use.
You know, I, actually, I don't have a problem with either one of those going over to permitted. Dance halls or caretaker residences.
No, I'm sorry. Can I ask you a question and then we'll go to you? You know, Joe, dance halls and amusement arcades in the 70s sense, which is the ordinance we pulled this off of, are a little different than in today's sense. I don't know if there's a dance hall anymore. You know, you deal with a lot of other cities, are amusement arcades and dance halls problems anymore?
Several cities do have specific regulations for arcade locations. Dance halls is more sort of that nightclub, I think, category.
Okay.
So I'm assuming.
Have you seen problems with arcades around anymore? Pinball parlors don't exist, you know, that whole genre is gone.
It depends on the hours of operation and the kinds of things, the games that are being played in the arcades.
So you, based on your advice, we would leave it there as a conditionally permitted use to regulate hours and terms of operation? Is that what you're kind of saying?
I'm just telling you what the facts are.
I appreciate the facts, but now I'm looking for advice.
If you want more control, obviously, the condition of permitted use is the way to handle it.
And other people do that because of the issues with that use? Okay. Councilmember Martyr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything that will generate noise at 2:00 in the morning, I think, needs to be regulated. And if this businesses, whether it's a dance hall or an amusement arcade, is going to be operating at 2:00 in the morning and generating noise, I think it needs to be regulated. That's where I stand on it. Why does it need to be regulated? Because we're going to get a lot of complaints. I remember when Heide Sano used to have their parties, their, you know, they were, I mean, they were shut down, there were neighbors calling in the city, and, and they were basically shut down. Why? Because less than a half a block away, there were residences. So at 10:00, they had to shut down their doors. So in that sense, I think we, we do a service to the public by providing some kind of a process where you do regulate things on after-hours and so forth that are potentially a public disturbance. They may not be, but they could potentially be a public disturbance.
You know, I, I agree. I mean, dance halls and amusement arcades probably do need some regulation there. I agree with you. Churches and caretaker centers, maybe put them as permitted. The dance halls and amusement arcades have some sort of CUP on that.
Well, dance halls are now nightclubs and they're up above, so I just took dance halls out because I think it's, nightclub is the more current term. Okay, got that.
Okay, next one is multifamily uses when accessory to commercial use on H Street. What, I have no idea what that means.
The way this is written is if you're, if you're on H, Ocean, or Central, sorry, you would need a CUP to add residential uses, whereas if you were off those streets, you would not need a CUP to have multifamily uses. And that's kind of a takeoff of the commercial office zone, which allows that now. And the bulk of the properties off H Street were either CO or MU. And so this kind of mirrors what we do now, except it's adding the ability to have multifamily uses as accessory uses on H Street. So in other words, a second floor use. But you would not be able to just build an apartment building in those zones on H and Central that are currently commercial zones. It gives, it actually gives the property owner more options. They basically, it basically allows mixed use on H, Ocean, and Central. And there are some buildings that exist that could be converted. Councilmember Martyr.
Don't we have mixed use already allowed in the corridor? Isn't that?
No, not currently. It's in that proposed overlay.
Oh, it's in the proposed overlay.
So this, this basically picks up the concept of the overlay and puts it into the code so we don't have to have the overlay. It just does the same thing. I think it just allows a lot more flexibility for property owners to, to have some choices.
Mr. Mayor, you're, you're recommending it stays unconditional?
Yeah, just so it has some regulation to it.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, we, we talked earlier, Councilmember Martyr talked about this assembly of consumer goods, maybe you'd like to elaborate on that, Councilmember Martyr, on some wording that might be better.
Well, I don't understand the distinction between assembly of consumer goods and manufacturing. I mean, and they're, they're mutually exclusive. I do believe that an assembly of consumer goods is manufacturing. Nowadays, we have so many prefab things that get put together and they get sold as goods. It's manufacturing. Now, should it go into a conditionally used permit? Possibly because usually it entails delivery of goods and trucks and, you know, traffic and so forth. So I do think it needs to be in the conditionally used permit. It's just that I don't understand why it says manufacturing is prohibited. It, you know, it's the same.
Mary Lynn, I would suggest that, I would like to have staff's feedback on that when they return, but maybe square footage really has to do whether you're assembling or whether you're actually manufacturing. I don't know if you, if that was the mentality. That's the one thing that I maybe pick out as a little bit different is when I think of manufacturing in an industrial area, it's much larger square footage. Although I don't mind moving manufacturing away from prohibited, you know, due to semantics, I don't mind that either.
Councilmember Martyr.
You know, it may be related to square footage area, but we are in a different world today. You know, we can, we can assemble parts, little chips that go into a computer in a very small space.
Right, and I think that the point being that I don't think anybody would mind that happening in a commercial area, but you wouldn't want large production items done in the commercial corridor.
A machine shop stamping out parts, kaboom, kaboom, kaboom.
Right.
So maybe, huh?
I don't want.
I, I would be very inclined to agree to move it over to conditional. I mean, obviously, it's not going to be something that we're going to be doing. We're not going to have drop hammers on H Street, but if we're going to assemble light things or whatever, I think we should have the option to do that.
I'm good with it either way.
So Councilmember Starbuck, you're recommending taking manufacturing, putting it over into conditional?
Yes.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
My one question, and I'm sorry if this makes no sense, but the way that I'm thinking about it is, would that create any issues for those who own the industrial properties in regards to location for businesses? Would you, are we putting the industrial sections at a disadvantage this way? Anybody's opinion?
I don't think so because the, the cost per square foot is much higher in this district. So you'd only locate there if, say, the building was advantageous, you want a storefront you're going to sell out of, yeah. I don't, I don't think there's a negative to it. Okay, I'll move her over. And, you know, staff, if there's something that we wouldn't want a lead smelter, so however you would do that. And this is a pull-off from the current mixed-use zone. And this, the reason it's in the conditional section is it's shared parking or public park, public pay parking rather than just the parking that you would put in for your single property.
Ms. Breeze, I have a question. For the reciprocal parking agreements at the larger shopping centers, are those currently under conditional use?
They're generally part of the development plan for the shopping center.
Right, so technically, that wouldn't need to be a conditional use.
The development plan is basically a conditional use permit.
Oh, that's all included in the, I'm sorry. That's all included in the application for the conditional use?
Yes.
The development plan is when the shopping center actually is established and there are those lines that are individual owners within a shopping center. And so we have reciprocal parking agreements so that all of the customers are able to access all of the parking areas.
This is no different than it is right now, basically. Okay, and then the last one would be the adult businesses permitted by chapter 17, da-da-da. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Martyr. Oh, and Councilmember Lingle.
No, I was, no, I was going to have you recognize, Councilmember Martyr.
Councilmember Martyr.
I, I think this brings the point that I was trying to make earlier, that according to this document, if you have an existing structure and you're not doing anything to the outside, you want to remove the standards. And this is where the problem comes in, because what if that business that goes into that structure requires X number of parking places? It's not going to be discussed anywhere, they're going to do whatever they want without having to go through the process of having to comply with a certain required parking. So the development plan standards are critical, even though there might not be any outside facade changes or anything of that sort. They are critical for the functioning of the city because those development standards are the ones that says you have to have X number of parking spaces, you have to have things to make the city function. So I want to bring it back to the council that we cannot get rid of the development standards, even though we may not be changing the facade, we really cannot get rid of them.
Councilmember Martyr, I believe we agree with you, that's why we're leaving it as a conditional.
I want to emphasize that because other places in here, we are taking them out.
We are agreeing with you, and that's why we're leaving it as a conditional.
Okay, let me share one thing too, so everybody, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What Councilmember Lingle said is not accurately commenting on Councilmember Martyr. If a, if a business is, is going to go in to a structure and there's no parking for that structure, and the business is going to do anything to the outside of the building, they aren't going to be required to provide parking. This, this is only when two businesses want to share parking, that's what this is for. Or if someone wants to go in and put it up, a metered public parking lot, that's what this category is for. It's not for the category that Councilmember Martyr was discussing.
And the other side of it is that if it's a mercantile use now and you put another mercantile use in it, then it doesn't trigger any of these things. But if you have a mercantile use and you're going to put an A use in, it triggers the requirements in our parking ordinance and you would have to have the parking to meet that A use, and that's part of the parking ordinance, not, which is another portion of our zoning ordinance. So you, you couldn't go to a more intense use without having to comply with the parking ordinance, which is another part of the zone, another part of our zoning ordinance that we're, the planning commission's going to look at it, but it's not on our list of things to do.
But my understanding that an A use is 100-plus occupancy, you're going to still have, you know, a shop with 20 occupancy and you still have to provide parking. So, so the A occupancy is 100-plus?
No, any A occupancy is.
That's what I understood.
Yeah, no, an A occupancy is what the type of use is, and that's a public assembly, which is a restaurant, a bar, a wine tasting facility, any of those, and they have a much steeper parking requirement because of the intensity, the use is a lot higher. And then a mercantile use is a lower use, and then you have a maximum occupancy in the building. In our code, it's, say it's 250 square feet per person to a maximum of 50. And that, that's in another part of our code.
Okay, so maybe it would be a good idea for the staff to provide clarification of that in the report when we get it back.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's go over to the Commercial Success Neighborhood and kind of look at that and see if there's any, Councilmember Costa.
Mary Lynn, I just want to clarify, so anything that's not listed on here, then we're just assuming is permitted. So liquor stores, I just was thinking.
A liquor store is a mercantile use, but it's also regulated by the ABC and frankly, in most, there's only, let's see, Ocean Avenue, east of A Street, and Chestnut, or H Street on the east side, between Chestnut and College are about the only places you could put a liquor store today because of the census tract and the crime and the density and yada, yada, yada. There are very few places you could put one today.
I just wanted to make sure that, so anything not listed on the permitted is essentially a permitted use?
Correct. And that would fall under retail sales, in the general retail sales category. Okay, so page three of five, let's go down and do the same thing again. Conditionally permitted were retail sales of consumer goods over 5,000 square feet. And that's basically because we're keeping in mind these are neighborhood commercial centers, and so the idea is to have small neighborhood businesses. Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, maybe we can make this simple because for exactly the reason you just mentioned, it's a little bit different because this is considered a neighborhood. I'd like council's opinion on, I like the way it's laid out right now. I, I mean, I wouldn't be in favor of changing anything, the conditionally permitted, leaving them conditionally permitted because they are in the neighborhood. So, I mean, I, in my opinion, I'd just leave it the way it is right now. I'm not, I wouldn't be interested in changing any of them.
You're talking about any of the conditionally permitted uses? Okay.
Except for churches.
Churches, we have changed churches previously.
Correct, similar to what we had done before, yes.
I agree that they should stay in the conditionally used permit as they are, all of them. I also want to make a comment regarding this. The Commercial Success Neighborhood is a very, very small amount. So it's kind of interesting that we have, we're clamping everything in one big thing, and then we have this small little thing over here that has these restrictions. I don't know if there is any other better way to split it up. I don't know, but I would like the staff to look into it. And I think you understand my concern, we would have one general commercial zone that basically is the whole city's commercial zone, and then we have this very limited number of commercial properties that are in neighborhood residential. Is there anything in between that we have, that we are clamping in where we shouldn't clamp it? Meaning that should we expand the neighborhood Commercial Success Zone into some of the commercial zoning? Meaning that should we expand the neighborhood Commercial Success Zone into some of the commercial zoning? Should there be a morph? And, and I have no idea. But they, they, it needs to be looked at as opposed to leaving the, leaving it the way it is.
Okeydoke. And one other thing I changed, the dance halls to nightclubs, to be consistent with our wording in the other one. And then I'd like to go to page five of five. And this is, this is basically straight out of our, our current ordinance. And this deals with new construction and developing a, standards for new construction, basically. And this is, I don't think there's any changes in this from what we currently have. It's down here. Yeah, it's less. The existing non-conforming vacant lots and residential densities.
I'm looking forward to staff's recommendation on these issues because I don't have the specific knowledge in regards to these specific amounts as suggested.
Yeah, I'm just looking for anybody's thoughts. The existing non-conforming vacant lots, within the, within the commercial zones, there are pre-existing vacant commercial lots that are less than the 7,000 square feet in size. These lots which are existing on February 1st, 2012 are exempt from the minimum lot size of this ordinance and maybe, may have buildings constructed that meet the other conditions of this ordinance. So that was what we talked about with, there's three or four 25-foot lots downtown and it basically makes them useful again. And the other thing that, that came up along this was within the commercial zone, there are residential properties that currently exist or the buildings still exist and in the meantime, they've been used for a commercial use. But because of the way the buildings were built and they were vacant in between, it's virtually impossible for them to be economically used for a commercial use now because now there has to be handicapped accessible ramps, stairways, wider doorways, handicapped accessible restrooms. And these old houses that were converted to office uses that are now vacant have lost that office use. And it's just financially impossible to, to bring them to the current standard for an office use. And they don't have the ability to let the house go back to a residential use.
Is that in regards to, I mean, another issue similar, but the grandfather issue, right? Couldn't, can't you, is that something you want to address that way, where you can grandfather into its original use?
Yeah, I think that's really what we're looking for, is that you can return to the, to, to an original use. If this had been a residence and it no longer can function for whatever it is, you could go back to it being a residence if that was what it was originally constructed for. There are several properties now that are basically useless.
My only concern would be if there was any modifications made to make it an office space?
Well, it would have to meet the, the criteria to go back to its original use. But I, I can think of one that just jumps right up at me, which is Maple and H, the Yellow House. And they went in and got an estimate the other day to try to bring it. It had been an office use forever and ever, but it was vacant for an extended period of time. So the grandfathered use was gone. And they went in and got estimates to bring it up to, to a current office use. And it was like $60,000. Well, there's no way you can justify that. I mean, you'd be better off to tear it down. And so.
Well, couldn't, couldn't we approach that one of two ways? One would be taking it back to the original use of a house.
Yes.
But the other would be dealing with that extent of time and either expanding that or dealing with that grandfather so it can continue as its existing use, even after it's been vacant for a certain period of time.
The problem with that is that the ADA requirements and the parking requirements and all those are not within our control. When, when the building's been vacant and it, it's being reoccupied, the ADA requires that all those things be brought up to code after some period of time. That's what the building department explained, you know, that you, you know you can't, is what they basically told me. So it would be a matter of allowing them to return it to a residential use. And I would certainly be in favor of that. I don't want somebody to have a property they can't do anything with.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, someday it'll be valuable enough, they'll tear it down, they'll build something else. But in the meantime, that would solve their problem. And there are a number of those properties all over the zones. Everybody good with that? Okay. So you can craft, you guys and staff can craft some wording that deals with that? Okay. Are there any other thoughts on this before we give it to the staff? Councilmember Martin?
I wanna emphasize again that I would, will oppose removing any development standards on existing structures and I will oppose that removal. I will also oppose grandfathering commercial properties. I don't have any problems with grandfathering residential properties. But in the case of commercial properties, I think because it impacts the public in terms of potential traffic, noise, they need to be looked at. So I just wanna make the statement out, if, if the report comes back, I would like and encourage the staff to look at the pros and cons of, of removing development standards and what the consequences are. I would like to also look at the staff, the pros and cons of not having, you know, being able to grandfather a commercial structure without having requirement to update it to the current standards.
Okay. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Councilmember Lingle, if I could ask really quickly?
Sure.
It seemed as though I may be the only one who wanted to keep downtown or Old Town separate. So, and I, you know, with the public that spoke, I, I want to listen to what they say and it doesn't sound like my idea is supported. So, I mean, if that's the case, that's fine. If we need, if, if that's the case, that I'm curious to know if council would like to focus on just having one CSG and keeping Old Town within that, those same uses and standards? Or if they should have their own separate, as was previously discussed?
Councilman Martin?
I think it'd be worthwhile to have in the staff report at least the consideration of an overlay. So to discuss the possibility of keeping it, you know, separate, to be put out there as an option. The council can still look at it. Now, an overlay, I think, would be simplify more than what we have right now, the specific plan. So there is already a simplification that is being proposed, an overlay. And, but I would like the, the staff report to provide, you know, an analysis whether that makes sense or doesn't make sense, what are the pros and the cons.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing, certainly willing to look at that. I mean, you don't wanna throw the baby in the bath water altogether. I mean, my, my effort here is to improve things, not make them worse.
Right, and then I would also just like to mention really quickly to staff that, you know, I, I wanna make sure that we're implementing something new. We need to keep in our mind that there should be strict review measures in regards to how effective the CSG is for the City of Long Poak. Now, that may be a little while out, but we need to revisit this at some point and decide, you know, whether this three-hour meeting brought us to something that's working better or it's not, quite frankly. So I want to make sure that we review that pretty soon thereafter it's implemented. Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's one thing on here that's made me crazy and I didn't, when I typed all this, I did it and then I didn't undo it. And I don't like Commercial Success Zone in general. I like General Commercial Success Zone. So if you guys would allow me a little literary license and the same thing with the other one, which would be Neighborhood Commercial Success Zone. And with those changes, a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I move that with the consideration of the council discussion that we've made tonight, I'd like to send this back to staff for their professional input and have them come back with a staff report for us.
And a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
No, this is, this is our, we get two rounds at this and then it goes to the planning commission. Because the goal is to have a fairly finished document before it gets to them. So the, the basic thought was this is the 70% document and we get done with it, it should be the 80 or 90% document. And then they'll, they'll put their finishing touches on. Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thanks to everybody for doing a great job. And, and? Yep, I had to borrow yours because I can't find mine because it's not blue. Okay. No written communications, no oral communications. Anybody else have something they wanna say? Last two minutes, going, going, gone. And adjourned, we are adjourned to the Long Poak City Council, whatever we are, not redevelopment agency, on Tuesday, March 20th at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for your time.